Let me get the right one. Council, welcome very much to this, the last council meeting of this four-year series. I'm going to talk about it later, but if everybody will take their seat, we'll get the meeting going. All councillors have now taken their seats. I will start the meeting and I formally open the meeting. And I start the meeting with an item, a sad item, recording the death of councillor Frank Leach MBE. Members will be aware that councillor Frank Leach MBE passed away early on Tuesday, the 8th of April, after a short illness. I know he will join with me in sending our deepest sympathy to his family at this very difficult time. A book of condolences has been opened in reception at Mid Devon District Council and online from Mid Devon's website for those who wish to leave messages in due course. It is intended that the representatives of the council will attend the funeral. And before I invite group leaders to speak, I have asked councillor Alan Connet to address the chamber with a poem, of his choice, which is 'Regret Me Not', from Thomas Hardy. Alan will give full details of the memorial service as well. Alan.
Thank you, chairman. Colleagues, a memorial service will be held at the Church of the Holy Cross Creditham on Friday the 16th of May at 2pm for our late councillor and colleague Frank Leach MBE. Donations to support hospice care or reach younger people with upper arm difference may be given by retiring collection or sent to Leroy Furnerals at 94 High Street Creditham, or simply go online to leroyfunerals.co.uk and you can do it online. As the chairman said, he's invited me to read a poem. I've chosen 'Regret Not Me' by Thomas Hardy. It's a poem that speaks of life and alludes to the final slumber we each will take someday. Regret not me beneath the sunny tree, I lie uncaring, slumbering peacefully. Swift as the light, I flew my fairy flight. Ecstatically I moved and feared no night. I did not know those heydays fade and go, but deemed that what was would always be so. I skipped up morn among the piles of corn, thinking it good and glorious to be born. I ran at eaves among the piled-up sheaves, dreaming, I grieve not, therefore nothing grieves. Now soon shall come the apple, pear and plum, and hinds shall sing and autumn insects hum. Again you will fare to cider makings rare and junketings, but I shall not be there. And gaily sing until the pewter ring those songs we sang, and lightly dance some triple-timed romance in coupled figures and forget mischance. And mourn not me beneath the yellowing tree, for I shall not mind, slumbering peacefully. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Alan.
Frank was only on this council for four years, but I knew him a long time before that, when he was mayor of Creditham for 13 years. I'm going to ask leaders to speak if they wish to say something, and then any other councillor wanting to speak, then I'm going to have a minute's silence. So James, you can ask first.
Thank you very much, chairman. A sad day indeed, and I think it is a number of years since somebody died while actually serving as a county councillor. And at Cabinet earlier in the month, we did have a minute's silence for Frank, and that was literally within a day and a half of his sad departing. I think, I hope I speak on behalf of everybody on the council, as Frank Leach was one of those people that endeared himself with everybody. He was somebody who really, you know, was born with lots of challenges and yet it managed to turn him into such an extraordinary person. That was so wise and helping to everybody. And, you know, I think there's few people on this council that actually goes to the heart of everybody and how you actually want someone to be in terms of being part of their community, part of this council. And so on behalf of the whole council, I'd just like to convey our condolences, especially on behalf of the Conservative group. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, Frank. James.
Caroline, leave it.
Caroline? Yeah, thank you. Frank Leach, once met, never forgotten. What a guy. So I only first came across him when we were both elected to this council back in 2021. And I think that through the time of my knowing him, I have been really impressed with actually he might have had challenges. he might have had challenges, but you know what, he absolutely turned those around and made a real virtue of the fact that he found solutions to problems. Actually, one of the things in this building, which is a legacy to him, is that some of the rooms where he could not get into because of the door handles being round, they're now lever door handles. There's a message for all of us there, but there is a solution there if we look for it. And I think he was a real solution finder. Anyone who has seen him, you know, deal with papers, you know, deal with any of the things that you and I do every day, irrelevant of not having arms, he absolutely was, I believe, the fastest potato peeler in the West. He had many skills. I think the other thing I would say about him is that, I mean, he was a true internationalist. You know, born in London, lived in Scotland briefly, lived in Wales for a long time, but had made Devon his home. His wife Natalia is not British by birth, and he was a real linguist. And I think he taught English in France as well, but I think he spoke four languages? I think he spoke maybe five? Anyway, seriously impressive. And then I think about what did he do while he was in Creditan? And, you know, he started out with town council and district and then county. As John mentioned, mayor of Creditan for 13 years, you know, that doesn't happen by accident. That happens because he made an impact on people's lives. And he was, from the feedback I've heard from people, he was very active, did a lot about improving relationships with the towns that Creditan was twinned with, did a lot of visiting of schools, went to, you know, all sorts of different charities, and was very present in his community. As a colleague, I can say he was hardworking, but I think we probably all experienced that. A man of integrity, and I think he was one of those people that if he said he was going to do something, he absolutely did and did the best of his ability. And on top of that, a real gentleman. He is missed, he will be missed by us and his family and the community. And I can only say it's been a privilege to have worked with him, and we mourn his loss.
Thank you, Caroline.
I wasn't sure if councillor Whitton, have you prepared something to say?
Give her a second.
A post this chair for being late, I was kept at the hospital, but I've come with some magic pills at last. Yes, I'm sorry I missed councillor, most councillors leave his speech, because I'm sure she would have outlined Frank Leach's many achievements. And I think what I would wish to add is simply to endorse how much he was respected across this chamber. I know we often say this when somebody passes away, but it really was true for Frank. He was an intelligent man who was so embedded in his community in Creditan. And he came here and in the four years he was here, he made quite an impact. So, yeah, he will be missed indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Hoxton.
Thank you, chair. I speak on behalf of the Greens and Independent Group and say that it has been a privilege to get to know and work alongside Frank Leach. He was a very remarkable and brave man. He's taught us a lot about resilience, especially as councillors, because it's not easy being a councillor at any time. But certainly Frank, as has been outlined, had his challenges. And I think it was a life well-lived. He was a very happy man, and that happiness was very clear. The last time I spoke to him, even though he knew he really hadn't got long to go, and he was cheerful and positive. And I think, you know, I think it's very sad to have this happen just before the end of the council as well, because he is missed. And so my sincere, on behalf of the group, my sincere condolences to his family and close friends. And, yeah, I'll attend the memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. I do know councillor Hall wants to say a few words. I'm not sure of anybody else. Councillor Hall first.
Thank you, chair. Councillor Leach, when I heard of his passing, my wife contacted me when I was my day job. It actually stopped me in my tracks. And I just thought about the times when I was fortunate enough to be chair. Frank really helped with equality, diversity, inclusivity, and he was always there free to advise. But I'm not going to repeat what's been said before, but I felt at that moment, we as a council became a little bit weaker. And Frank, in my opinion, and I'm sure across the chamber would agree, he was the best of us. Rest in peace, Frank.
Thank you. Councillor Huxton.
Thank you, chair. So I also don't wish to add any more in terms of what has already been said about Frank. He was a great man, and he was somebody who rose above his problems and his travails. I just wanted to say, at the back of our papers today, is actually a testimony to Frank. He was my successor as chair of CIRS scrutiny committee and did an absolutely amazing job in a very short time. And I know all of us will miss him greatly.
Thank you, Alister. Andrew Sainwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I endorse everything that everyone has already said. I rise only very briefly, just as chair of the governance working group, if I can be permitted, I think, to speak on behalf of all my members, fellow members of that working group. Frank was a much-valued member of the governance working group and contributed to it greatly. In particular, I'm sure you won't mind me saying this, that he was an excellent proof reader. No typo was never left undiscovered from Frank's beady eye. But he did much more than just spot the typos. He was a measured, moderate, pragmatic voice, and his contributions, along with everybody else, meant that we had a good working group and, I believe, a good, solid set of proposals that will set the new council up in good stead when it forms after the May election. It may not be a sort of public-scene legacy, but it's certainly a sound foundation and a great legacy. And on behalf of the group, I pay tribute to Frank and I thank him.
Thank you, Andrew. Margaret Squall.
Thank you. Can I just say, I'll miss Frank, Creditan will miss Frank. Our divisions joined and we shared an awful lot in the time. I think I first knew Frank when he was mayor of Creditan. And I saw him at many, many occasions. We rubbed along and our divisions crossed, and if something was needed in Creditan when it came to locality budget, we had an agreement that more often than not, if Frank put in a sum, I would put in half. I shall miss Frank, and I'm sure this council will miss Frank, and Creditan will miss Frank.
Thank you very much. George. Sorry. Okay, Tracy.
I just wanted to add something that I was going to put into my scrutiny report, but this seems the inappropriate moment, really. While I was chair of Children's Services Scrutiny, Frank came along and was part of lots of the meetings we had, even though he wasn't officially on it. But his passion, both he and I, shared a huge passion for young people, and I really want to flag that. And I think it will always stay with me, that shared passion. Also, lots of people may not realise, Frank and I had a shared passion for foreign languages. We were both foreign languages teachers. And I just, and his love of language was really important. I hope you don't mind, I'm just going to read a little bit, a very small poem, that's what I was looking up actually, in French, because that was part of who Frank was. And it's very short, but it starts, for those of you who don't speak French, which is, "When the night has died." But it finishes with, "Everything is possible." And I think that sort of reflects, Frank is gone, but actually, he told us everything is possible. So. Rest in peace, Frank.
Thank you, Tracy. Sarah, can I?
Thank you. I didn't know Frank well, didn't spend a very lot of time with him. However, we used to natter, often before and after meetings, never during. When I say we used to natter, Frank used to speak and I would listen, because he was a truly fascinating man, actually, and he spoke with such warmth and enthusiasm. And I think my lasting, the lasting impact that Frank has had on me is he made me think differently about disability. It's not what you can't do, it's what you can do. And I can see him now, with simple things about the terminology we use, raise your hand to say you indicate. And he would flag that and say, no, indicate. And last thing, he was the self-appointed microphone monitor, so I can hear his voice ringing out saying, microphone! So rest in peace, Frank.
Thank you very much. Can we all please stand? Thank you very much.
Right, I have apologies for absence. And councillors Atkinson, Bailey, Channan, Gribble, Bryce, Sanders, Thomas, Wootman Love and Hartman. Are there any other nominations? Councillor Scott, please. Raymond Brighley. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you. Declarations of interest. I always make this statement, but I, you're reminded, if you do have any declaration of interest, please either note it now or prior to any discussion that may take place. Jackie Hudson, councillor Hudson.
Thank you. I just wish to declare an interest as the Chair of Trey, which is Tottenham's Rural Area Youth Engagement Group, which I will be speaking or referring to in response to one of the questions that has been put forward today.
Thank you. I have minutes. The council have already been circulated for the 20th of February and the 20th of March, 2025. They have been circulated. Can I sign as a true record? Somebody suggest? James, second it, councillor Yapsley. Everybody in favour, please show. Thank you. announcements. I have a couple of announcements, and it is equally my sad duty to report the death of former county councillor and alderman Lieutenant Colonel Tony Drake. After a distinguished military career, including commissioning the Coathstream Guards, he entered public life in 1985 as a church warden, and then a member of Musbury Parish Council. He served East Devon District Council from 1987 until 1991. Became a member of Devon County Council in 1989 for Axminster Rural, and he was elected again in 93, 97 and 2001. He became a deputy lord lieutenant in January 1996, high sheriff in the year of 2001, 2002, and chairman of Devon County Council in 2003. I will be attending his funeral, which is taking place in Musbury on the 30th of April. So anybody that can remember him, I'd love to see you there. On a happier note, the council and its household waste recycling centre contractor, Sewers Recycling and Recovery UK Limited, have been shortlisted in a Let's Recycle Award for Excellence in Recycling and Waste Management for 2025. The entry, which is called Devon County Council and Sewers Recycling and Recovery, a reused partnership, has been shortlisted in the reused initiative of the year category. The entry focuses on the significant achievement of the council's HWRCs, yes, having sold over 10,500 tonnes of reusable goods since DCC started working with Sewers in 2012. I say, well done to all concerned. Roger, can you pass on our thanks to the committee? Thank you. Now, can I remind members, if they wish to speak, they must catch my eye. Contribution should be added to the debate and not repeat what's already been said. Members are asked to turn off the sound function on their laptops during council. The notification noises are distracting, and additional background noise makes listening difficult for many people. Please use the microphone on your left. Remind the public that officers are members using laptops and tablets to access the papers for their meetings. As I remind you to everybody in the chamber today, this council signed up to the LGA Debate Not Hate campaign. Whilst debating and disagreeing with one another is a healthy part of democracy, there can be a fine line between robust challenge and unacceptable discourse. It is the right engagement that matters. If it is necessary to do so, I will call out any insensitive or ill-chosen language that I hear in the chamber today. Right. Now, item six on the agenda, important announcements from leader of cabinet, I'm not aware of any. I cannot, so I can go on. Item seven, items requiring urgent attention, I have none. So item eight is petitions, questions or representations from the general public. Before we start this session, I would also like to remind those attending and speaking today, the comments, questions and representations should be factual. Statements should not include any personal comments or details of other individuals, including names. It also goes without saying that statements should not contain any offensive language or vexatious comments. If inappropriate comments are made, I will ask the speaker to stop. Can I assure everybody, councillors as well, they've got a kill button for me today. So for the first time ever, it will work, I'm led to believe. I don't want to use it. Can I remind the council of these 20, we allow 30 minutes for this. I understand I have a petition from Dr Sally Morrell Smith, on behalf of the Tottenham City community, relating to the youth services at Rushbrook Tottenham. Dr Sally Morrell Smith, please present your petition, and I invite you to say a few words.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The Rushbrooker Youth Club has taken years to build up into what it is now. It has a great relationship, great relationships and rapport with the local children who go there. It has fantastic facilities that have cost thousands to accumulate, such as a fully stocked music room, recording studio, pool table and other games. The children can attend for just one pound, meaning it is totally inclusive, unlike other more expensive clubs. All of this equipment has been put into storage and the doors closed, which is a complete race of resources. Youth clubs need these types of resources to provide meaningful interaction and learning and to attract children to come. They need a permanent space with storage. The Totnes Youth Club is very popular. For example, there are 35 children from years seven and eight that attend every Tuesday night from 6:30 until 9pm. My son Alan has friends that go along who live in Harberton, Rattery, Dartington and Staverton. And they choose to come to Totnes rather than attend village youth clubs as there are not many children attending the village youth clubs, mainly because there are not that many children of the right age to make them work, which is my experience growing up in a village too. From my understanding, the Devon County Council funding is being directed away from the very popular Rushbrook Youth Club into the smaller villages. If Devon County Council decrees that space should be working in these villages, this should not be at the cost of already existing, and might I say, very successful services. 11 to 13 years is a tricky and impressionable age. And I, as the mother of a 12-year-old, am not happy with my son just hanging out in town at night. Furthermore, with the attractions of the internet, it's difficult to get him offline. Tuesday night is the only night he's not gaming with his friends, who are all boys. I'm very strict, I only allow two hours gaming a night. But the dangers associated with the online environment have been well documented, especially in programmes such as adolescents. Boys and girls are becoming more distant. And I feel now, as children's lives are becoming more digitalised, it's more important than ever to keep youth clubs going, to provide a way to hang out, other than online, to provide strong role models for our children and places where they can talk to trained staff about problems, should they need to. On the surface, it may seem that Totnes has its fair share of youth provision, which I go into more in my letter, but this actually isn't true. Myself and several other concerned parents have started a petition to garner support for keeping the Rushbrook Club open. It now has over 430 signatories, just handed it in. I hope that this level of support demonstrates the value in keeping the youth club going and indeed the importance to the local community and indeed strengthening provision. Here are the key requests, that the youth club, the Totnes Youth Club at Rushbrook, sorry, I'll start that again. The Totnes Youth Club should have a permanent home to enable the maintenance of the fantastic resources, ideally at Rushbrook where the space is perfectly adapted. The club should have provision for different age groups on a weekly basis so that years seven and eight are separate from, for example, years 10, nine and 10. I hope this has demonstrated that the youth club is very important to Totnes and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much indeed. There is a question on this shortly, which I believe the cabinet member has answered. But there will be a supplementary from councillor Hudson, I assume. Thank you, Dr Morrell Smith. Now, I have no other petitions on my sheet, nobody else has one. In which case I'll move to there are two questions from members of the public on one representation. Any supplementary questions should be succinct. A copy of the questions and answers have been printed and circulated around the chamber. Can I ask speakers to use the microphone? First question is Mr Cleesby. Mr Cleesby, you are in attendance? You have had a written answer. Do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Very grateful for the answer, which is, I think, arguably arcane. But it's probably right with issues like this, I'm given a public hearing. Could I ask the deputy leader if she agrees that if the county council, if this county council disappears, there will be no county in the combined authority? That it's possible that new unitaries may not all wish to participate? And that leaving a combined authority on the existing footprint misses the opportunity to bring Primuth and Cornwall into a new strategic authority? So in sum, would she agree that matters are perhaps more flexible than her answer implies?
Councillor Davis.
Chairman, this is all within legislation, so beyond my control, although I'd like to be in charge of the world. So I mean, obviously, always the door is always open to Plymouth and Torbay and I cannot predict what's going to happen in the future. Crystal balls were not given with my role, sorry. But yes, I do agree, it'd be great if we're all together.
Thank you very much. Second question, I'm going to go for Quever, I hope. McKenna. I did ask who I pronounced your name. You have three minutes to talk. Oh, no, sorry. You have, sorry, I'm lost here for a second. Second question, I'm, 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 sorry. Mrs Marina Puzey. And councillor Hughes has given your written answer. Do you have a supplementary?
I do. Chairman and councillors, thank you for this opportunity to speak here today. This morning, my 11-year-old's son got ready for school. He asked what he would do this evening, now his youth club is closed. His concerns are built around the vital support he drew from the trained youth workers after a serious assault he was subjected to while in school. I promised him I would fight for him and all his peers to keep his vital resource open. Today, I'm here to lend support to something that costs relatively little but means absolutely everything to the young people in our community, Rushbrook Youth Club Totnes. The current leisure centre in Totnes is rundown. The local outdoor pool at Magic Brook is out of service. The long-fought for skate park remains a pipe dream on paper. And the TRAY youth session that runs every second week is too broad an injury for comfort. Our children are turning to abandoned structures and isolated parks to gain their independence. Youth clubs are more than just buildings with table tennis and music. They are sanctuaries, places where our young people can be themselves, find guidance and build futures. In a world where mental health struggles, isolation and pressures are clearly documented among our youth. Safe spaces like these are not luxuries. For many, they are lifelines. Where do young people go after school if their home life is unstable or they feel lost? Where do they turn to when they need advice, encouragement or simply someone who listens? For many, the answer is their weekly age-specific youth club. This is the place where they are judged not on what they don't have, but celebrated for who they are. These clubs help build skills. They run workshops on CV writing or conflict resolution. They offer creative outlets. They foster leadership, resilience and teamwork. They keep our young people off the streets and away from the real and present risk of county lines that are visibly active in our town of Totnes. Weekly youth clubs help reduce antisocial behaviour, crime rates and school dropouts. They're not just good for the individuals involved, they are good for our whole community. Closing Rushbrook, the youth club, might save money on a spreadsheet, but it will cause so much more in lost potential, broken trust, opportunities missed and police presence. I ask to reinvest in our young people, believe in their future and keep Rushbrook open. Our young people deserve a place to grow and our community deserves the strength that comes from supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Quever. And my apologies for not introducing you properly. You were going to make a presentation on behalf of the youth service in Totnes. Thank you very much. Again, I say there is a question that will be answered shortly from county councillor on this one. My second question then is Mrs Marina Puzey. And councillor Hughes will give a response, assuming you have a supplementary question.
Good afternoon. I am a representative for the people of Dartmouth who are still waiting for Warfleet Road to be repaired some 13 months after its collapse. Despite your statutory obligation to keep roads open and knowing that the closure of this key road is having an adverse effect on residents and local businesses, you continually refuse to give us a start date for these works. On the 20th of February, we presented you with a petition with 2,513 signatures. Shortly afterwards, councillor Jonathan Hawkins contacted us to say that Maria Price of Devon County Council Legal Department had given him her assurance that the road would be fixed in the spring. On the 5th of March, we received an email from Meg Booth stating that there was no timetable for resolution. We have been constantly fed misinformation from all parties and demand that Devon County Council apologise to the people of Dartmouth for the cavalier way in which we have been treated and get on with these works as promised by Maria Price in February 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Puzey. Councillor Hughes, would you care?
Thanks, Chairman. Well, the only thing I can refer to is my reply and say that that further reminder letter has been sent out to the owners of this wall. That went out earlier this month, reminding them of their responsibilities and the notice is still in effect. So once again, I can only say, if the landowners continue to fail to address this issue, then the county council will be left with no other choice but to carry out the repairs and attempt to recover the cost. And I do apologise for the wait, but there we are, that we've got other similar situations around the county. But let's hope it's not going to be too long before this wall's repaired. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hughes. Item nine is petitions from councillors. Does any councillor have a petition for me? No? In which case, item 10 is questions from members of council. There are six questions from members of council. Questions and answers have been emailed out and published on the web. Councillor Connet, you have a question and councillor Crode has replied. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm grateful to councillor Crode for the reply and in particular noting the support that we all share in the chamber for the service, men and women, in particular regarding the actions of VE Day and the celebrations thereof. My question posed one simple ask, which was to request the chief executive of Devon County Council write to local representatives of the Armed Forces and Veterans organisations in Devon, sharing this resolution and reaffirming the council's respect, gratitude and continued support for their service and contributions. And in his reply, he's not answered that. So may I invite councillor Crode to support that request so that we can, as a united council, invite the chief executive to write to those organisations to affirm them of this council's support and the celebrations of VE Day? Will he join with me, Chairman? Thank you.
Councillor Crode.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Alan. Yeah, I will ask the chief executive if she will, in due course, pending the new council coming in, I guess. So I can only promise the, I will ask. It would be up for the new council, I think, to promulgate that. And by the way, thank you very much for your kind words in, within the question as it started. So yeah, that's all. Thanks very much.
Chair, can I interrupt? With your respects and say, between the 1st of May and the 22nd of May, there are no councillors technically in this council. But I am in office and I will assure councillor Connet and all everybody, all other councillors here, that not only will we write to the organisations, but we will also fly the VE Day flag on the 8th of May, which I think is something I can say, but councillor Connet will not be in office and couldn't say. Sorry, councillor. Crode, and neither will councillor Connet be in office either. Look, we're okay. It'll be done. Councillor Two, question two is from councillor Jessison. The councillor Twist has given a written reply. Does councillor Jessison have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the staggering figure in that reply of 25,507,825 or 69,884 per day is interest payments from, which are the historic interest payments from prior to 2009 and prior to this administration, from the previous administration, which would buy an awful lot of pothole repairs or other things that people of Devon want us to be spending our money on. Is there a mechanism to refinance or pay off these loans early? As I understand that at that time, interest rates were significantly higher than has been the case for much of the time between now, between 2009 and now?
Councillor Twist.
Chairman, thank you very much. I do welcome the supplementary question because certainly with regard to potholes. I mean, that's been an irksome subject for all of this council and going back before. And unfortunately, the reality and the fact of the situation is that the penalties for refinancing or paying off loans early are so punitive that it just has no financial advantage whatsoever to Devon County Council. And I'm afraid that taxpayers are saddled with this un-inherited debt in some cases for, on these loans, which don't expire, some of them until 2059. Now, I repeat, this is something we inherited and I'm shamelessly going to say we've had to stick for it. But I think others in this chamber must also share responsibility for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Question three is from councillor Randall Johnson. And councillor Bullen has given a written answer. Do you have a supplementary, Sarah?
Thank you, Chairman. I do, and I thank the portfolio holder for his comprehensive reply. It is vitally important for the residents of Devon in this service, which to a large extent is hidden from a lot of people. Most people don't know the massive amount of work that we do for our vulnerable adults. So my question to the portfolio holder is, how does Devon County Council rate nationally?
Mr Bullen.
Thank you, Chair. I'm grateful for the question. If you look at the information that is provided, you'll note that Devon is performing extremely well against the comparators of the local authorities and English authorities in terms of the care homes that are available in Devon, the community services and the personal care. And we're significantly better than the average across the UK. It's also important to remember that we're dealing with people and we're dealing with the most vulnerable members of our society. And one of the things that took place this year was to talk to those people, to establish from them their opinion of the services that Devon are providing. And I'm delighted to say that the feedback that we got placed us a fourth out of 152 other councils in terms of the quality of services that the services users perceive the quality that we're providing. And I'm grateful and I want to express through this council meeting my appreciation to the officers involved and the public, the private sector that's providing the care homes. And I commend that after four years, this council can honestly say it's delivered on behalf of the people that is most in need in Devon, the services that they need effectively across the county and well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bullen. Question four is from councillor Helia on street lighting, modernisation. And councillor Hughes has given you a written reply. Do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do, Chair. Thank you. I'd like to thank councillor Hughes for that very comprehensive answer to the question. But my supplementary question is, can you tell me when the dimming trial will commence in Biddeford?
Yeah, thanks very much. Well, I'm pleased to confirm that Biddeford was actually switched over a couple of weeks ago on the 9th of April. And, but we're not changing any of the main roads, so it doesn't affect those at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. Councillor, question five is from councillor Hodgson, reference to youth service in Totnes. And you have had a reply from councillor Crode. Do you have a supplementary?
I do, yes. Thank you, councillor Crode, for your reply, but I fear there's some incorrect things in there. As I've earlier declared, I've got an interest in TRAY project, which I instigated and chaired. That's Totnes Rural Area Youth Engagement Project. And this organisation has been approached to take over the youth services in Totnes. And those discussions, discussions including about funding are underway. However, no partnership agreement has yet been reached on the youth services. In fact, there's a meeting tomorrow to follow up on some of the conversations. But the Purpose Built Youth Centre has been But the Purpose Built Youth Centre has been closed and remains empty. There is no other youth space in Totnes. Regrettably, my request to the relevant officer has not received any reply of where this decision has come from. So who has decided this change of services and why has the only dedicated youth space in Totnes been closed without any public consultation or reference to the town council? First I knew of it was when TRAY was approached. And I see in your reply, it talks about there's been consultation with the young people. I haven't seen any of that. I haven't been made aware of any of that. And so I just think this is all very premature and I'd like to ask again, please, can Rochbrook be reconsidered? Because without a youth space, we are just kicking more and more at our young people without anything good for them. Is there any hope?
councillor Crood?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Given the fact that councillor Hodgson thinks this is a complete fabrication, I think I'd better write to her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wait, question six from councillor Hodgson, our local government reorganisation. And councillor McInnes has replied. Do you have a supplementary on this one?
I do. Actually, my question, my supplementary is, is the answer yes or no regarding the comparison of bringing services back in house compared to the costs of outside tenders commissioned services? We carried this out for the highways maintenance a couple of years ago. And although the findings of the scrutiny committee were then overturned by the cabinet, it is possible to do this comparison and I think it's a very useful opportunity if we go into local government reorganisation. So yes or no is the answer, is the request, please, on that answer.
councillor McInnes?
Thank you very much. I have to disappoint councillor Hodgson, I'm not going to do yes or no, because anyone who's involved in local government reorganisation across the country knows it's far more complex than yes or no. The main issue is whatever changes we have to make because of whatever unitaries are actually created, it's actually based on data first and foremost, so that we actually know the realities of whether it is cheaper to bring it in house or it is cheaper to outsource. We don't have that information yet, so I wouldn't give you a yes or no answer on that. And secondly, we are all politicians of different persuasions. And when the information is put in front of councillors, what the actual technical data is telling us, then it is the time for politicians to make that political decision that may not necessarily go along with the data. So I'm not going to be cornered into yes and no. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That ends questions. So we go to item eleven, which is minutes of committees. No committee minutes have been called for debate. Therefore, can I first, as chair of the standards committee, move the minutes to the tenth of March two thousand and twenty five? And I would also move, or do I take a vote on that one? I just get confused on this one. Is that separate? Right, that's fine. Then, I also formally move all committees. Audit committee, twenty seventh of February, appeals committee, third of March, thirty first of March, twenty fourth of April, investment and pensions, third of March, public rights away, sixth of March. And the appointments and remuneration committee, I do have to take a vote on. I need councillors' approval under minute one 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 relating to the appointment of Daniel Moncrief to the post of Assistant Director, Commissioning for Children and People's Futures. Can I have a proposition for that, please? James Secunder? Andrea Davis? All councillors in favor, please vote. Thank you. It was a unanimous vote of the people at the committee. Development Management?
Sorry to interrupt, but item four minutes? I don't think we voted on those. Sorry. Thank you.
Right. Development Management Committee, Children's Scrutiny Committee, seventeenth of March, Health and Adult Care Scrutiny Committee, twenty fourth of March, Corporate Infrastructure and Regulatory Services Committee, twenty seventh of March. Is that agreed? Thank you. Now we move to the scrutiny annual reports. I will ask councillor Randall Johnson to present the annual report of the council's scrutiny committees. I will then ask spokesmen of each of the scrutiny committees to speak if they so wish, following which opportunity for members to ask questions and discuss any issues raised in the annual report. So first of all, councillor Randall Johnson.
Thank you, chairman. In rising, it is with sadness, as we have already acknowledged, in my taking my feet as a very pale substitute for councillor Frank Letch. He did an excellent job chairing the corporate infrastructure and regulatory scrutiny and it should have been his turn to have spoken to you today on our annual work that we have done in this final year of this council. Within the document, which I have a copy here, you will also find links to the last four years, or the last three years, making four years in total, of the work that we have been doing. None of this work would have been possible and the progress made if officers and members had not worked together to deliver improvements to services on behalf of our residents. I echo the sentiments expressed by the chief executive in her recent message. Progress depends on mutual respect and we've heard from the chairman itemising some of that today. And it is respect of one another that we must maintain. But whilst doing that as elected members, we must tease out clarity from our officers on how services are delivered. Members, we are here to make decisions, often incredibly challenging. None of us stood for election to make lives worse. We all came here to do good and Frank Letch showed us that way. In turning to this excellent pamphlet, just a glimpse at the work undertaken, thank you to all officers and those of our partners and organisations who have appeared at committee and given evidence to members, for your commitment, but also to the members of those committees, for your hard work in making sure that the recommendations that were put forward to cabinet were poignant and clear. And it is good news that in a large extent, cabinet have accepted those recommendations. On turning to health and adult care, our last piece of work, which in a way is very fitting today, end of life care. I was worried the assisted dying private members bill might blow us off course. This was probably one of the hardest ones that we had done. I would say to you all, we plan for our birth, we need to also plan the same thing for our death. And in saying that, if nothing else, we need to start with our relatives and our loved ones, those difficult conversations when their lives are drawing to a close, because we must learn to listen and to action their wishes. And it was very clear that those doctors, nurses and others in the care homes, et cetera, had a passion for palliative care. And I really don't think that the assisted dying private members bill, as it was first presented to parliament, would have helped that. In looking to the future, one thing I would say, and I would like to thank councillors Hall and Scott for the excellent work that they have done over the past four years for our carers. Our unpaid carers are so important and if we don't look after them, the bill to this council and to the general taxpayer will be huge. And I'd like to thank them particularly for that work and suggest in the future that the new council looks at this and refreshes that piece of work. Chairman, I would now like to ask if that's possible, that councillor Adams makes some comments about what she's been doing with the children's services. I think, as we all know, our adult social care services and our children's ones are the most important. I'm sorry to the deputy chief executive, your roads are important and the pothole outside my gate is just as important as others. Don't worry, it belongs to Southwark, so it's nothing to do with here, and actually there isn't one. But it is protecting and looking after the people that we represent, which is the most important. And I'd like to thank all members of this council for your efforts in helping us with the scrutiny work. And don't forget the wonderful work that we've done with our overview and influencing the future. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Andrew Johnson. I'm going to ask councillor Adams and then councillor Slade if they want to say something. councillor Adams, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak as chair of children's services scrutiny at the end of this year. Today is a day of lots of reflection and thanks, I appreciate that. I hope you'll bear with me when I thank people, it's important amongst all the conversations and the challenges that we have as councillors and with officers, that we do spend time thanking people and this is an opportunity to do that for me. I've only been chair for a short while, but I would like to thank the previous chairs during these four years, councillor Hannaford and councillor Aves, for all their work before me, which laid the foundations of the work for this year that I have chaired. I'd like to thank officers councillor Ledbetter and councillor Samuel and all the members of the children's services scrutiny for their really important contributions. I especially want to thank councillor Sanders for his support as vice chair and for chairing the fostering spotlight report, which was so important this year to the work that we did. I also want to highlight the work of Charlie Fisher and Louise Raymond, who have been utterly invaluable to me and to the committee, as they had to get me up to speed in this role very quickly. I'll also add thanks to our specialist adviser, again, without whom we would find our work very difficult. The highlights of this year really have been the huge success of the fostering task group and I thank the cabinet for accepting the vast majority of the recommendations. The fostering is so hugely important to this council, not only for the children who are in our corporate care, but also, that is the most important part of, but also financially, they make a huge difference to us as a council. Things that they've really welcomed have been the change in using egress, a very small change, it seems, and yet that's made a huge difference to our foster carers. And for listening about producing a portal to make life a lot easier for them in the future when they get about their business of being foster carers. I think the thing that touched me most really was how they said what was most important to them is that we as councillors on the committee genuinely engaged with them. And I think that's a really important message for us all to hear as councillors, that our engagements with the young people, the people who provide services, our residents and listening to them, should really drive how we perform in scrutiny. And I'm delighted to say we all voted in our last committee meeting for a foster parent champion for the next council. And I really hope that whoever chairs the next council and the next committee and administration will put that in place. I have had so many emails of support from the foster parents for the work that we've done and I hope we can continue to put that at the top of the work that happens in children's services scrutiny. SEND obviously will continue to be an area of focus and it has been an area of focus. However, it has been encouraging to see the green shoots of improvement so hard won by the SEND team. This obviously will continue to be a very important focus for the future. And I'm sure the next children's services scrutiny committee will build on our time with continued focus on SEND inclusion, the sufficiency of homes for our children in care and the very important role of involving partners in their roles and responsibilities to our young people in Devon. That's something I would have been glad to carry on with, had I been chair next time, to look at as working together and having more partners in the room to talk to, to bring along with us on this important journey for our children. I will certainly watch with huge interest after May the first, the progress of children's services scrutiny. I've been wanting to be a part of this improvement journey. It was a driving force for me becoming a councillor initially, knowing how, not wanting to dwell on the negative, but how poor it was when I was a teacher. And I am delighted to see that there has been huge progress in the four years, still much to happen, but huge progress. And I thank everyone, officers and members, for that. And I hope that you will continue with, as councillors in the future, with passion, focus and commitment to meet the improvement challenges that are needed to succeed. I wish you all all the very best after May the first. And for me, it's over and out.
Thank you very much. councillor Slade?
Thank you, chairman. Well, I speak as vice chair of the CIRS scrutiny committee, a position I held for three out of the last four years. I had a year out when I was serving you as your vice chair, but the first two years I served councillor Dewhurst, a very able chairman of CIRS, and then for the past year with councillor Letch, which has been a very rewarding relationship. Actually, Frank and I had known each other for many years in a number of capacities at mid-Denver and when he was mayor of Crediton. So it was a pleasure to serve with him and it was with quite an emotional feel that I actually stood in for him for the last CIRS meeting just a few weeks ago. The two previous speakers, the chairs of those other two scrutiny committees have said really all that needs to be said. All I will do is highlight the fact that a lot of the work of scrutiny is not done in the meeting, it's done in our standing overview groups, our master classes, our spotlight reviews and our visits, like the ones to the materials lab not so long ago for CIRS, all of which are very educational for the members of the committee and help us to make the right decisions when making recommendations to cabinet. I'm not going to list all the individual things that we've looked at because they're in the report, you can read them for yourselves. But I would also like to add my personal thanks to Louise Raymond and all the scrutiny team and the democratic services team, who give so much time and skill to supporting our scrutiny committees. And I certainly wish all the very best to whoever the next chairman of CIRS might be in the new council. Keep up the good work. All our scrutiny committees are very important. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Dewhurst, you have signals. Nobody else has yet to signal.
Sorry, thank you, chair. Thank you. So I think scrutiny is actually one of the outstanding parts of Devon County Council. It's something that we do really well and we should be really proud of and is seen by other councils, particularly here in the South West, as a shining example of how it should be done. Obviously, I'd like to thank all my colleagues on the CIRS committee, but also on children's services, because when councillor Letch took over for me, I joined the children's services scrutiny committee as well and had a really interesting time there as well. Specifically, I'd like to thank councillor Slade and councillor Bullvent, who were my vice chairs and my eyes. vice chairs and my eyes and ears, particularly on the left hand side because as Colin knows, I don't see anything at all from that side. But also I need to thank our scrutiny officers who do an absolutely fantastic job and particularly Louise Raymond who took over from Camilla de Bernhardt Lane who left us to join the Centre for Scrutiny, a national organisation, and just showed what kind of national importance scrutiny has in Devon. I'd like to also thank our Dem Services officers, do a fantastic job. Without you, particularly when we start, we've no idea what's happening, so thank you very much indeed, you really, really have helped. In the last scrutiny committee, I did thank all our officers, I'm not going to go through them all, but thank you very much indeed again and I did, I hope, mention all of you at that last meeting. Finally, just a little plea from the children's side. I've sat on the corporate parenting board for the last 12 years and we used to visit our children's homes. Sadly, they're closed, they're now reopened, we have more children's homes and I really believe that we as members of the council, as corporate parents, we should be seen in those children's homes, we have a responsibility there and I do hope that the new council actually organises that so that we can be part of those children in their life story, in their growing up and ensuring that they have the best possible start in life. Thank you very much, chair.
Thank you, Alastair. Councillor Hall, Liam Hall.
Thank you, chair. First of all, thank you to the chair of health scrutiny, councillor Sarah Randall-Johnson. He's been very, very eye opening over the last couple of years on the two areas which you touched upon, end of life care. We undertook a lot of learning individually and collectively and at the same time as you were saying, the bill in central government was there. And we had a discussion, we'd been undertaking this work for several amount of months, a new government came in and we were recognising that we only were the tip of the iceberg in our understanding, but it became absolutely clear, we need to get right what we're doing now on the palliative care. We were so fortunate, we had so many expert speakers and that was all drawn together by our expert officers. At the same time, my dear daughter Jennifer finished her degree in nursing and she was actually at the same time as this subject matter at St Margus Hospice Care at Somerset. And she hasn't been shy coming forward, she told me how it was. And then we move on to, as the chair said, about unpaid carers. Interestingly, at my last One East and Devon partnership forum meeting on Tuesday, we had a presentation from the unpaid carers and I was absolutely delighted to hear that Devon County council is a carer friendly organisation. Now, I can say from my day job, this will help the employee, but this will also help the organisation. If we have more of an understanding about the challenges of our employees and then we're able to unpick, we can plan for any area of leave and necessary to look after our loved ones. The good thing also is there's nearly a couple hundred organisations across Devon who are signing up to this area of support. And finally, for me, chair, the four year plan going forward. One thing I would say is coming from the side of the road I did on Millway Rise Estate about our individual responsibility towards our health. Throughout our years, we plan for schooling, we plan for work, we plan to move, we plan to retire. We still don't speak about end of life. We need to plan end of life, not necessarily the way you exit, but make those ones around you what your wishes are. Get ahead of the curve. We take responsibility in everything we try to do, but we still, society, have our heads firmly in the sand unlike a lot of our European neighbours who speak more openly about it. So we still have a long way to go and I would really encourage the new council to ensure that we are individually and collectively working further upstream in our communities to really give them and empower them to be the best version of themselves because if in case we as a council going forward have every chance to succeed in a very, very different environment going forward. So on that, thank you very much, chair, and again thank you, chair of health scrutiny.
Thank you very much. I see nobody else come forward, so leader of the council.
Thank you, chairman. It's a really great pleasure to stand up on behalf of the council and thank scrutiny very much for the work they've done. And as councillor Dewhurst has already said, you know, we're recognised nationally that we do scrutiny well in Devon and that is something really to be proud of and as long as I've been a councillor, I've always had the view, don't be frightened of scrutiny in terms of administration, embrace it, work with it. Scrutiny come forward with ideas and if you actually look at the record, cabinet traditionally has always picked up what scrutiny's come forward in terms of recommendations and scrutiny helps mould policy. I think scrutiny over the last four years has got a very proud record of what they've done and especially how we adapted to Covid, you know, master classes. You know, master classes are now a key way of actually informing not only members of scrutiny but wider membership if they want to be involved. I'm not saying that you do it all through master classes, but they are a key tool and a key tool that some of our partners like the health are picking up and seeing as a way forward to inform a wider population. So lastly but not least, just to reinduce what's already been said in terms of our scrutiny offices and member services of how they've supported scrutiny, it couldn't happen without that teamwork and I know talking to some chairs of scrutiny of how they work with the scrutiny officer in putting together the sort of introductory bit from the chair in the various scrutiny reports and everything and it's all done so professionally, done together, done well, congratulations and thank you very much.
Councillor Randall-Johnson, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think the only thing I would like to say is to name the democratic services for their support and also for our excellent team in our adult social care and our public health. I ought to be standing on one leg. Come on, everybody. The one thing about when you get older is you can't see, can you? Stand out here and do it, oops, I can't see, sorry. I'm going to go on one leg and I've done it before in one of the meetings, so I'm on one leg, can you do it? I know that the director of public health can actually do it with his eyes closed. Now, I'm not going to embarrass him by asking him to do it now, but remaining, I can't see what he's doing, it's probably a good thing. But what is important is that we keep our flexibility and that we keep our mobility going and it's such a simple thing to do when you're either putting the kettle on to make a cup of tea to be on one leg or when you're cleaning your teeth and as you're supposed to clean your teeth twice a day, you've got double the option for improving those leg muscles. So having said all of that, it is Dan Looker and his love of cricket, and my love of cricket too, that has been so fantastic over the years working with him, I'm sorry it sounds flippant, but to have good relationships with your officers, not necessarily over the subject matter but on something else so you have a wider view of life is so important. We mustn't become too obsessed with being councillors, we are human beings, we need to treat one another with respect. I have pushed Dan on many occasions to do things that he didn't want to do and I am so grateful to him for him for being hard and not giving in to the bullish Randall-Johnson, at which point I am going to sit down as my leg is beginning to get tired.
Thank you very much, Sarah. And before I go to items thirteen and fourteen, I just bring back if I may councillor Trail. You raised a question, I think outstanding was, did you say that we did not approve the minutes on item four?
Yes, sir.
I think we did. Yes, that's what I thought, I listed out the two meetings, I said, was it agreed? And everybody said yes. So that's why I carried on to item five, sir. Okay, I'll move to thirteen and fourteen. Item thirteen first, we're talking about notice of motions. Before I start, can I have everybody's attention while I state the process? I will first ask the mover of the original motion to speak. They will have seven minutes to introduce their motion and also respond to the cabinet recommendations which have been printed on the agenda. The seconder of the original motion will have, will be asked if they wish to comment or they can reserve their right of reply. The leader will be asked then to move the cabinet minutes and the deputy leader to second. I will then ask the mover of the original motion if they accept the cabinet recommendations. If they do, the accepted wording before the substantive motion and the debate will commence with the leader having the right of reply. If they do not, the leader will be asked to speak on and explain the cabinet recommendations. The seconder can speak at this point or reserve their right to speak later. I then open the debate inviting any other member to speak. After the debate, I will ask the leader to sum up and the council vote on the cabinet minute. If the vote is lost on the cabinet minute, the original motion becomes open for debate and the usual rules of debate apply. If it is carried, there are two options, the council either votes on the cabinet minute as a substantive motion or if there is to be an amendment, then it should be submitted at this point. This must be seconded and the seconder can speak at this point or reserve their right to speak later. A further debate will take place with the mover of the further amendment having the right to reply at the end of the debate. A vote will be taken on the amendment, if it is lost, the motion reverts back to the cabinet minutes and further amendments can be submitted. If the vote is carried, this becomes a substantive motion and the council either vote or further amendments can be called. I'm sure that's clear to you all after this time. General reminder, the council must only debate one amendment at a time. When submitting amendments, they must relate to the motion. It can refer the matter to a committee, leave out words, insert or add words, but must not introduce a substantially new proposal or give effect to the direct opposite of what is the proposal originally. Why this may sound complicated, we've got the Candice Solicitor here and she'll get you corrected. I will go straight on, lowering of the voting age sixteen and seventeen, unfortunately councillor Ashworthson, I guess wrong, Atkinson is not here. Now councillor Whitten, the offence, Maria Ashworthson, you seconded the motion, do you wish to speak on it? Or in relation to the cabinet reply? Well, before we start, Candice Solicitor will give us some guidance.
Thank you, chair. So just to start, the general underlying presumption is that normal council business has to continue over an election period, we are in a sensitive election period unless any particular initial initiative, proposal, consultation or publication is published in that period that could be regarded as having, or given a candidate or their supporter of a political party an advantage in that election. However, in this debate, the chamber today is open to every member and has an equal opportunity to contribute to the debate. In addition, the council must deal with the motion in this administration in order to wind up all business of the current administration. Thank you, chair.
Now come back councillor Ashworthson, is there anything you want to speak or would you defer to councillor Whitten?
Thank you, chair, but I think councillor Adams is going to speak on behalf of that role.
Councillor Adams.
Yes, thank you. I won't speak for a long time, but I thank you so much for the reply to this. The only real addition I would add is that I'm sure like many of us in this room, I really value democracy, it matters a lot to me and I have said to friends, neighbours, obviously I do mind what you vote for, but actually the most important thing is that you vote and I think this motion really is about engaging our young people in voting. Try again, thank you. And I don't know about you, when I'm on the doorstep and young people enter the door and they say, well, why should I bother, what, how does it? Okay, yeah. And I think sixteen year olds now are very eloquent, they have a lot to say in society and I really hope that although it isn't a decision for this council, it will be a decision for our present government, that we actually bring down the age of voting in line with what happens in other European countries, I believe in Norway and Austria it's been a huge success and all in the name of promoting a more engaged society and if we can get engaged society and democracy, if we can get young people to really engage in voting and understanding the importance of democracy, then hopefully we will be a safe and robust future which perhaps in certain parts of the world is not quite so at the moment, but I'll leave that one there. But I thank you for the response from the cabinet and I look forward to our government hopefully bringing forward this opportunity for young people to vote earlier, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll look across now, is it open for everybody now or do we actually have a chance of getting a speak?
Sorry, I was distracted, giving some advice to councillor Lever. Have we moved the cabinet minute? No, no, no. So, yeah, James needs to move.
James now moves according to my.
Needs to be seconded, then that becomes motion open for debate.
The cabinet recommendation which you'll take a second or four. Thank you, I'm six and a seventh today for some reason, James, over to you for a second.
Thank you, chairman. I'm very happy to move the cabinet minute, I will read it out actually just to give the emphasis and it's A, note the government's intention to introduce legislation to lower the voting age before the next annual election, it is an intention at the moment, there's no date, there's no legislation. B, welcome the spirit of the notice of motion in terms of supporting young people to engage with democracy and democratic processes and ask members to support the commitment of the council in promoting and raising awareness of upcoming county council elections including working with Devon youth council to develop targeted communications to the first time voters and young people interested in voting and C, continue to build on the engagement with Devon youth council to support the aim to get the voice of young people heard and make a positive change. And that's where I think this cabinet recommendation is absolutely crucial is actually getting those engaged at a young enough age and I could like, I will come back in summing up in debate, but I'm a bit of a sad soul, but when I was at school, which was an awful long time ago, about fourteen, I did have, my best friend was a Labour voter and he was fourteen and we used to argue politics every day, all day at school and I've taken that through my whole life and I really enjoy doing that and we need to get our young people to see politics as something for them and something they can enjoy as well as it be serious. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconder councillor Des.
Very happy to second.
Thank you. I ask councillor Adams, are you prepared to accept the cabinet recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you, then there's no further debate on this item, in which case all in favour, please, sir. Thank you very much. I'll move to the second debate which is on wasp women. I'll move to the second debate, which is on WASPY Women. And again, on this one, I will ask councillor Lever if she'd like to introduce her motion. At this stage, I think it's, what Candice Slistor found?
Thank you, Chair. So members, please note that you have a dispensation to speak and vote on this matter. The general dispensation permits this if a member or co-opted member is in receipt of a pension. The only exception would be if it related specifically to that member's entitlement or payments. But the council is not making a decision which directly affects the financial status of those in receipt of a pension. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Lever?
Thank you, Chair. Now, for anyone who doesn't know what WASPY Women stands for, and I'm sure people do, it is all about women who have been disadvantaged in their later years through changes in the age at which they can collect their national pension. Now, we all of us, even those of us who are councillors and don't have any employer contribution to a pension, we all of us plan for our future. As councillor Hall has been talking about, we plan through our lives and we think about how we can act responsibly for our own benefit and for our family's benefit. Now, this is true of women who were born in the 1950s as well. But back in 1995 and then followed up with in 2011, various pensions acts have increased the age at which women born in the 1950s will receive their state pension from sixty to sixty-six. Now, sixty-six going up from sixty is a significant increase. Now, if we had noticed, if people had noticed of that, they would have been able to plan. They would have been able to adjust payments and contributions into private pensions. There would have been opportunities for women affected by this to ensure that in their more mature years, that the pensions they were, or the income they had actually were able to cover their costs. Now, what's been found is that the, and this is the Parliamentary Health and Parliamentary Health and Service Ombudsman has found that the Department for Work and Pensions did not inform many women of this change or give them sufficient notice. Some were not informed at all because of changes of address or whatever. And some people were only given a year's notice of six years increase in the, or delay in the time in which they would be getting their pension. So the Ombudsman found that actually the Department for Work and Pensions was guilty of maladministration because it did not leave women in a position to be able to make adequate provision for themselves. Further, this is back in March of 2024, the Ombudsman instructed the then government of the UK to apologise to the women affected and to set up a compensation scheme at level four of their financial remedy scale. The previous government failed to do either of those things, which is unprecedented, that the findings of the Ombudsman would be ignored. Now, the now current government has apologised on behalf of previous governments, but as yet there is still no financial compensation system set up. So this leaves women with, you know, an apology is great, but actually it does not help from a financial point of view. It does not compensate women for the additional financial burdens which have been placed upon them. Now, across the country, this has affected 3.6 million women. It's not insubstantial. And in Devon, 66,550. That's nearly a whole constituency. It's a lot of women who've been impacted on this. So what I was looking for in this motion is for us to think about, not party politics, but for us to think about the way in which we as a society provide, enable people to provide for themselves in their older age. And that part of that is about clear and effective communication that enables people to make provision for themselves. Singular, well, both of the last two, the current government and the previous government have not accepted the findings of the Ombudsman in terms of a financial settlement and compensation for these women. And we look at where people are now and we're now finding that the WASPY women, as they're known, they've crowdfunded for money to be able to have a judicial review because the findings of the Ombudsman have not been accepted in terms of the financial recompense. This is a pretty desperate move that people have been forced into. And I think that the amount of money that the WASPY Women organisation has been able to raise as, you know, to pay for a judicial review reflects the strength of feeling that there is amongst this particularly hard-done-by group of women. My motion was very much seeking to identify that this is, you know, this is something which has been going on for some time. And I'm, I would, I understand that the Cabinet minute is somewhat different and I believe we'll be coming on to that, but I would like to make an amendment to that when we get to that point. All I can say is that for the women affected, this has meant poverty. This has meant having to try to make ends meet without the time to make up the provision which they needed to do. And it's affected a lot of women in Devon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Connelly, you seconded the motion. You want to speak now?
Chairman, I do wish to speak, but in the debate and I'll be guarded by you when that should be.
Fine. Okay. Councillor McInnes, will you move the Cabinet recommendation, please?
Certainly, Chair. Happy to move the Cabinet recommendations and I will read it. Express deep disappointment with the injustice caused by the government's decision not to financially compensate women affected by the failure to communicate about the state pension age changes and its refusal to comply with the Parliamentary Health and Services Ombudsman's recommendations. And b, we must write to Devon MPs urging them to support the Women's State Pension Age Ombudsman Report on Compensation Scheme Bill. Happy to move.
Councillor Davis, will you second?
Very happy to second.
Okay, this is now for debate. No, sorry. Councillor Lever, you are not prepared to accept the Cabinet response, I take it?
No, I'm not. And I do have an amendment I'd wish to move, please.
That's in a minute. I've got to ask you that question first. Okay, this one's up for debate now. Anybody want to talk on it? If not, councillor Connelly, would you like to come in?
Thank you, Chairman. I support the WASPY issue. Colleagues may recall, sorry, can I just check how many minutes do I have for this? Five, brilliant, thank you very much. So colleagues may recall that we've had a WASPY motion here before. The injustice is incredible. Do you know, the fact is in local government, there is generally an agreement that when the Ombudsman makes a recommendation, councils accept it, that we don't quiver from it. We accept that someone independent has looked at it. In this case, the Ombudsman has looked at the WASPY situation, has made a recommendation. I think it behoves government to respond to that positively and not to shy away from it. I've come to an age in my life when I look at my, I think about my own pension, my own retirement eventually. And I am not a WASPY woman, self-evidently. But the issue is, I can well imagine what it must be like to be thinking about your own pension, planning ahead, you've done all the right things. You're thinking about that money that has been promised and then suddenly the deadline changes and you're short. And various commitments or expectations will be made by a number of those women. Now, as they've said over the years, it's not necessarily the change, but there was the abruptness of it and the lack of communication. A bit like this council, Chairman, that we invest on behalf of people. And in this council, there's been some concern about what's called the Devon County Council debt. Very few people actually talk about the things it's being spent on, like the Buckfastley Relief Road, two million pounds, or highway structural improvement, over three millions, residential care homes, over a million, Barnstable, the Widden Valley New Primary School, 1.7 million, the Exmouth-Brixington Infants, 160,000. Chairman, there are many, many schools and residential care homes which have benefited from our investment. And I know in terms of the WASPY situation for many women, you know, the inability to manage because of the pension situation is throwing them into debt. It's not unlike Devon County Council. You might be surprised to know that there are thirty corporate credit cards where we spend something like £280,000 a year on them. If we come back to the situation that the WASPY women find themselves in, Chairman, they have been thrown into a situation they had not expected. The county council can plan. We take advice from our officers. When the council in those earlier years decided to take out loans in order to support the capital programme, to do the works in schools across Devon, or fix roads and all those things, you remember the days when we did fix roads? When we did all those things, it wasn't the councillors, it wasn't the leader of the council taking out the loans, taking advice from officers. And so those WASPY women would have been taking advice in preparation for retirement and then found that the government threw them short on the WASPY situation and prematurely cut them off and have left them much worse off than they expected to be, Chairman. I think it behoves all of us here today to support the motion as amended by councillor Lever and to call on the government.
Can I just stop? We haven't had an amendment yet.
No, no, when we do, I'm wrapping this into one, Chairman, to save a bit of time for you. Thank you very much. I'll take another four seconds on the clock. So what we should be doing is calling on the government to play fair by those women, recognising that the Ombudsman, Chairman, the Ombudsman has independently reviewed it and made a fairly modest recommendation about what the recompense could be. Whether it's this government, the last government or whatever, we should do the decent thing by the WASPY women. And I would call on all councillors in our last council meeting to stand with the WASPY women. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Connelly. Anybody else want to speak on this? If not, then I think I may call councillor McInnes to sum up on the Cabinet recommendation.
I'm probably not, you know, Chair, I've got, I'm not aware of what the amendment is yet. Am I or have I missed it? Or will we just vote on the Cabinet recommendation first?
On the Cabinet recommendation, for the stage.
Yeah, and then we take a vote on the Cabinet recommendation.
Could I just reply to councillor Connelly? And I've got a great respect for councillor Connelly and he is a thinker and he, you know, about issues. But when I read the Cabinet recommendations, it is doing exactly that of supporting WASPY women. It's doing exactly that. It's not acceptable that they haven't taken the recommendations of the Ombudsman. And it's saying to Devon MPs, please support that WASPY woman. I mean, you know, we have a dispensation, but, you know, my sister wouldn't mind me saying my sister's a WASPY woman. I've got a very, other close friends who are WASPY women. So I have every sympathy with what councillor Connelly says, but I haven't seen the amendment yet, but I don't see any changing of the wording that has come forward as the Cabinet recommendation is actually going to change. We're not actually making this decision. We are actually saying that the government needs to look at it again and we're disappointed at how it's gone so far. And that's exactly what the Cabinet recommendation is saying, so I'm still happy to move.
Councillor Davis, second?
Yes, very happy to second.
Thank you.
Council now needs to take a vote on the Cabinet minute. If that's carried, it becomes substantive and at that point the amendment will be moved.
Let me take a minute. Everybody in favour of the Cabinet minute as explained by the leader of the council, Bishop? Thank you. Those against? Now, I believe we have an amendment. Am I correct? Well, the amendment, I have a copy of it, obviously nobody else has.
It's on the order paper that was sent out via email and there's some hard copies there.
James, can I pass you that copy? It is councillor Lever, sir. Will you care to speak on your amendment?
Yeah, thank you. So I think if I go back to what's been happening in the history of this, I take you back to May of 2024, where there was a cross-party Work and Pension Select Committee, which then instructed the then Work and Pension Secretary to set up the compensation scheme. Are we carrying on with this or? Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so it's cross-party, cross-party Work and Pension Select Committee. So as the name suggests, that was from across the political divide. Now, the Cabinet minute does not acknowledge that there were any difficulties at all with any previous government, but the point of this is that actually across the political landscape of the country, that this is something which has been acknowledged as problematic. So I would like to make an amendment to the Cabinet minute to reflect that and to just sort of be, for there to be a little bit of accountability to reflect the reality of the situation. So with your permission, with your acceptance, I would like to read this out. So that council expresses its deep disappointment in the injustice caused by the previous government's decision to ignore the Parliamentary and Health Service Ombudsman's recommendation and subsequent failure to financially compensate women affected by the lack of effective communication about state pension age changes. B, note that the current government has apologised to WASPY women for the injustice caused, but to have failed to provide financial compensation to the affected women. And c, write to Devon MPs urging them to support the Women's State Pension Ombudsman Report and Compensation Scheme Bill or any other measures that could provide additional to support to women affected. It's really trying to reflect the cross-party nature of the concerns on this matter. Thank you.
And you have a second for that. Councillor Connelly, thank you. Anybody else want to talk on this before I call the leaders to speak? No, James, Peter, respond.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much for your amendment. But I don't really see it changes everything. I mean, we're quite clear in the Cabinet recommendation that we're very disappointed with the government's decision not to take the Ombudsman's recommendations. And we're quite clear, we're asking our Devon Members of Parliament to actually support the WASPY women. And while there's pretty words here and adding various things, it doesn't change the actual essence of the Cabinet recommendation. So I'm going to stick with the Cabinet recommendation.
Thank you. And on the basis of that?
If the debates concluded, Caroline Lever can sum up.
You have the right of reply now.
You have the right of reply.
Thank you.
Sorry, Phil, wait a second. Councillor Connelly? I did ask if any other councillor wanted to speak.
Well, Chairman, the leader just made his point and I think we're in a debate and I just wanted to indicate as a seconder, as I may before the proposer summates. And it's simply to say this, Chairman, the leader believes that the amendment doesn't change the Cabinet recommendation. Therefore, why not accept the amendment because according to him it makes no change? But it does actually add to and further the cause of the WASPY women, which I think there is agreement in the chamber for, Chairman. Thank you.
You are, so last minute of this session.
Thank you very much and thank you councillor Connelly. I'm not accepting the amendment because we have the Cabinet recommendation that was decided at Cabinet and it was unfortunate that councillor Lever was unable to attend Cabinet and actually here then, when we made our Cabinet recommendation. So we've done it in entirely good faith. I don't believe that the amendment changes things. And I want there to be absolutely no doubt as far as this side of the chamber is we have absolute support for the WASPY women and will work with our Devon MPs to try and change the government's mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now you go to the vote. Councillor Ashfordson?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a point that actually this amendment does change in quite a big way, where it's added under a, the previous government's decision, because we can't just blame this government.
Because we can't just blame this government, it's subsequent governments as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I did ask initially for comments. Nobody came forward, which is why I gave the summing up and the summing out. Now, I'm taking no more. I'm going to go straight to a vote this time. Do I vote first?
Yeah, thank you. I think, on the one hand, if we say, as councillor Connelly suggests, if there is no difference, then why not accept this? But actually, I think it does make an important difference. Because actually, this is not a problem which has arisen under the current government, it has arisen in previous governments, and it goes back to changes first in 1994, which, you know, is quite a long time ago. And there are different political colours of government who have not taken on board the difficulties faced by these women. I think, to me, it looks, you know, we are a week away from an election. I really hoped that the council and the councillors would be able to look on this as being an issue about accountability and understanding that the impact on women has become about because of the the actions or lack of actions of a number of different governments. And I think it is disingenuous just to go with the cabinet minute and just to, it kind of implies it's only the current government. When in fact, this current government has apologised to women on behalf of previous governments. I think it is a real pity that actually, I think that the cabinet minute actually is playing politics with people, and I think we should be above this as a council. And my amendment is seeking to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to the vote. Amendment first?
The council is voting on councillor Lever's amendment now.
Amendment first. All those in favour, please show. All those against, please show. Thank you. On the basis of that, then, the cabinet report recommendation, everybody in favour, please show. Everybody against? Thank you. Nobody's against it. Thank you very much indeed for that one. Now, there are no other motions. On the basis of that, I'd like to make a statement before everybody runs away. I firstly wish to wish all those members seeking reelection good luck for next week. One or two of you are fighting each other, so it's going to be interesting to see what the result is. Secondly, to thank all of you, including myself, not seeking reelection or are not and those that will not be re-elected next week for their contribution and work on behalf of the county council over the years. And I wish all those members a long and happy retirement, as my wife is promising me I'm going to have one, and I'm a bit worried. I also place formally, my record, this is for me, but I think I speak for everybody, my thanks to all the officers of this council who do so much great work, day in and day out, providing services for the residents of Devon. And I really do mean that. From bottom to top, all of our officers work hard for Devon. And at times, I think, we get very, they don't get the credit they deserve at times, if I'm bluntly honest. And I won't comment about some of the publicity that's going around in this county council election, I'm not allowed to. I have a list of county councillors, twenty-seven are definitely retiring. That's before anybody loses their seat. Twenty-seven are retiring. And because it is the last meeting of the county council, rather than everybody disappear, I've arranged for scones outside and some drinks. So everybody can have a little bit, a nibble and talk to each other, to say goodbye to each other, because this is the last time. This council will be together. Some of you I will see on the second. Others I will not see again. From the second to the twenty-second, apparently, I'm in charge, councillor Connelly, and there are no councillors in this place. So I think you all better be polite as much as I. Can I thank you all, sincerely myself, for everything that everybody has done in my last year? And to a certain extent, what everybody did in the fifteen years before that. And the eight years before that were just as entertaining. Jackie, you want to come in?
Yeah, thank you. It's a bit late in the day to do this, but I actually got the nod that I was going to be able to speak on the sixteen-year-olds' voting. We went to the amendment, and it wasn't taken as substantive, folks, so we didn't have a chance to speak on it. And I think there was, I don't know if other people heard, but your vice chair took me my nod as I would like to speak on it. And I don't know quite how that was dropped. I just feel it's something I'm very passionate about, and I was rather disappointed. But there we go.
Jackie, I apologize. I looked for everybody, I saw no indications, and that's why I took it to the vote. Okay, can I adjourn this meeting? Thank you all very much. Sorry, James, want to speak?
Yeah, I don't want necessarily a whole row of members retiring to actually stand up and say cheerio. But for myself, after twenty years and I'm retiring, and I've had the great honour of being in the cabinet and being leader of this council for the last twelve months, but bigger than that, I've had the honour of representing my community for the last twenty years. I would just like to give my thanks firstly to all the fellow members. It's been great working with you, all political parties. And that's the one thing about this council, we may have our spat, there's a county election going on, but most of the time, we work very closely together. And that's what's wonderful. It's not like it everywhere. And secondly, could I just add my thanks to the sort of the officer corps generally? And I know the public out there, all will look at the councillors thanking the officer corps, but the public out there need to realise that the officer corps, both from up here, down there, working on the ground, on the coalface, really worked really hard for the residents of Devon in sometimes very difficult times. I mean, if you go through the pandemic, for instance, and how our officers actually reacted to the pandemic and how they generally stood up to the challenge working with members to deliver services across Devon. So personally, I'd just like to thank everybody. It's been great working with you. Thank you.
Can I do a roll call? Because over and above myself retiring, Christine Chairman has been a member since 1993. She wasn't well enough to come today. John Berry, 2001, Ree Rafford, 2001, Margaret Squire, 2001, Jeremy Yamsley, 2001. Gerry Brook, Roger Crowe and James McKinnis, 2005. George Gribble, Percy Price, Sarah Randall-Johnson, 2009. Alistair Dewhurst and Rufus Gilbert, 2013. Marina Ashferson, Sue Avs, Ian Hall and Andrew Saywell, 2017. Tracey Adams, Danny Barnes, Marcus Hartnell, Sarah Khan, Frank Leach, James Moorish, Ian Room and Martin Wrigley, 2021. So a lot of councillors have spent a lot of time here, looking after people. Devon County, you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to thank everybody for their contribution across the political wide divide. We're here because we care about our communities, and I think sometimes that can get lost in the rough and tumble of the debate that we have here. It's hard work being a councillor. We all know that. We all work hard. I would particularly like to pay tribute to my colleague Alistair Dewhurst, who has been a fantastic council colleague for me. So thank you so much. And there are some people who, I mean, I've only been elected in this current term. There are some people actually I have never spoken to, because this last term has been the strangest of all with Covid at the beginning. So it was quite a surprise when, after a couple of years, we found ourselves in this chamber. But I think that throughout that period of time, what I have seen is that actually people's commitment to their communities and indeed councillors and staff alike. So I'd just like to thank everybody and to wish everybody well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On that note, I think cream tea's outside. Go and enjoy yourselves.